And I will call the meeting to order. First item is to take roll call. We'll begin with Mr. Bryant.
Here.
Ms. Buck?
Here.
Mr. Derricks? Mr. Derricks? We see you.
Here.
Okay.
I'm here.
Ms. Ostendorf, here. Ms. Tower?
Here.
Ms. Tipton?
Here.
And Chair is here. All seven board members are present. We'll go ahead and stand and say the pledge of allegiance together.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Jennifer is going to read the vision, the mission of the Red Wing Public Schools.
The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens.
Thank you. The agenda for this evening is posted in our board book. Does anybody have any changes or additions to make this evening? All right, I'm seeing none, so I will look for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Motion made by Holly.
Seconded.
Seconded by Anna. Any other discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call both then, starting with Ms. Tipton. Aye. Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
And Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derricks?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So the agenda passes as presented, seven to zero. All right, first is the educational plan. And now that we are meeting in person again, we do have it on a board behind me, which will always be here in our presence when we meet. It's also always listed in our board book and it helps us to remember and keep at the forefront what our goals are as we move forward. Next on the agenda is recognitions and upcoming events. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share? Holly?
Thank you. I heard from somebody who is working summer blast and they told me they're having a blast and that there's a whole bunch of kids and everybody's happy and running around and happy to be there. So congratulations on the blast staff and everybody for putting that together. It's really important and I was really happy to hear it out of the blue. Someone texted me, so thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks for sharing that. It's good to hear. Other recognitions or upcoming events? All right, seeing none, I do want to take this time to talk just briefly about a loss that we've experienced in our community this week. Our Red Wing 2021 graduate Sammy Creasy passed away this last week. She just graduated and it's impossible to put into words or make sense of such a horrific loss. And our sympathies are sent to all who mourn her loss. I didn't know Sammy well, but I do know that she had an infectious smile that lit up any room. I saw her at the lobby when she was taking prom photos and you couldn't help but notice her smile, her giggle, her laugh, and how much she was adored by her friends. And so I know that so many in our community are hurting right now. And many in our community and many in our district are teachers, are staff. It shakes us all to the core. And I want to just remind us to hold each other close, to be kind to one another, and share as many smiles as you can in honor of a girl who always has a smile. And so I'll just take a moment of silence, please, in honor and memory of Samantha Creasy. Thank you, everybody. There to, oh, go ahead, Holly.
Thank you. And I also wanted to acknowledge that it's my understanding her mother works for the district. And so just knowing that and how hard it is for her family and we really appreciate the work that she's done. She's in our thoughts as one of our family members of the district, so.
And she's a paraprofessional at the Colville Family Center.
Yeah, so for thinking of it.
I do know that her visitation is Wednesday evening from Florida Ave at Mont. And her funeral is at 11:00 AM at the Church of St. Joe's on Thursday. More information can be found on the Mont website. And our sympathies go out to the Creasy family. I do pledge our support, our district's support. We've got counselors here. We've got staff that are willing to be here for our students and our staff. And so we'll just put that up there as well, that you're supported. And we just need you to let us know and reach out and we'll be there for you. With that, it's hard to move on from such a heartfelt and difficult loss, but I couldn't start the meeting or have a meeting with that kind of weighing on all of our shoulders. And it's here in the room and we feel it definitely, so we definitely needed to acknowledge that. Next on our agenda is public comment. We always enjoy and respect and welcome public comment. We expect comments to be three minutes per person or less. We may or may not talk about a public comment or topic that was brought up at our meeting, but we'll always provide a response. And we expect comments to remain respectful and appropriate and not identify any current or former students or families or staff members by name. I have one individual for public comment this evening. And Mr. Bose, I'll turn it over to you.
I think you're supposed to come here.
And you can turn the camera.
So, let's see. Thank you. Oh, there it is. Okay, I trust the volume's on.
Yes.
Happy summer, everybody. Thank you, Chair Rowe, for the comments. I would be remiss if I didn't express my own condolences. I'm deeply struck, as many of my colleagues are. We've been communicating with one another about the loss of Samantha and particularly for the class of 2021. Previous year, they lost another classmate similar. So this is a class that understands pain, but they also understand celebration and happiness, and they will be strong. And so I have them in my thoughts from here through the rest of the summer and heartfelt to the entire family and community. Beyond that issue, I intended for weeks to address this body at some point this summer and merely offer my gratitude. As a parent and as an employee for this district, I'm not speaking as a union member, I'm not speaking as a department representative or anything else, but tonight, just on my own behalf and as the parent of one student still in high school here and really for a lot of others, gratitude for the past 16 months of leadership from the district, from the board. I may not always alike or understand every decision by our board or administration from superintendent on down through each building, but I appreciate all the effort and work that's been taking place. My wife works in another district. I pay very close attention to what schools are doing around the state, around our region, around the country. I listen and I think about what we're doing. And I've been extremely pleased to work for this district and very pleased with the leadership from the top down. And so please know that that's heartfelt as well. This has been an extremely difficult time for the United States of America and the whole world. And I'd like to think we're turning the corner. I think there'll probably be some hiccups and problems in the fall. I think everybody recognizes that. It's a pleasure to work with colleagues that I have and administration and everybody. But my biggest gratitude really tonight is to go out to those, I think, who have been on the front line and have done the most for our community and for us. And this has been the custodial staff. I've talked to a lot of our colleagues across the district. And so it's not just me here at Red Wing High School. Everybody here knows the face of Red Wing Custodial Staff has always been Al Hartnik for the past 40-some years. For Carol and Mike and Val and all those that I know the names of here at the high school and for all those across the district, I just can't believe the amount of effort that they've had to put forth and the extra effort that they've gone. And I really hope that there's some way that the district can find to congratulate, to reward, to go the extra mile for all of the extra effort that they made this entire 16 months. It was one thing for us teachers to have to clean desks and put up our own, you know, plastic shields or something like that on our desks if we wanted. But it was just an incredible effort by custodial staff. And I hope that, I hope that there's further recognition for all of their effort because it's an incredibly good job market out there right now. And I know a lot of them would be easily hired elsewhere if we don't thank them and reward them as best you can. And so I took a Monday night in my summer to come out and say thank you to all of you and recognize the positivity of working in ISD 256 and really, really emphasize my thanks, my appreciation, my respect for our custodial staff the past 16 months. I mean, that graduation, all the chairs, the work, every Veterans Assembly I get to sit through, any assemblies we get to attend, all of the evening activities. They're there to pick up and put away and clean up and everything and every day coming to school. So Red Wing High School is premier and the whole district is very fortunate with our custodial staff. So that's my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you just as much.
Okay.
We all feel the same way.
Yeah. Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Definitely welcome to stay.
I'm passing.
First on our agenda this evening is Learn and Earn. And Burke Murphy and Devin Clatt are here to give us a presentation about the program.
Is there a way that this is projected or do I just look at it?
We all have it in there.
You can, yeah.
I don't have to. I can just talk, but I.
For you to be on camera, you'll just have to turn the camera on there, but the sound will automatically go. Do you see how to?
Yes.
Yep, there you are.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for giving us this opportunity to introduce you more formally to the Learn and Earn Youth Skills Training Program. This is a Department of Labor and Industry grant that was funded in 2018. And before I launch into this, I want to acknowledge the leadership of Superintendent Anderson, who helped us launch this endeavor to provide meaningful worksite learning experiences for students that are 16, 17, and 18 in Goodyear County. The template you're looking at is the original template we created to exemplify the way in which this would be a countywide collaborative. So far, we've been able to engage six to five or six school districts across the county. This is our third year. And honestly, it has been extremely important to have the active support and implementation of Red Wing High School, particularly the leadership of McWenland and the high participation rate of students from Red Wing High. They have been great participants, great contributors, as well as our employers. There, we have eight Red Wing employers, but in total 14 to 16 manufacturing employers. And we are expanded in our year three and year four, the coming year, to agribusiness. And we would like to engage more students in that work. So this is somewhat off script because there's no way I could go through those slides in two to three minutes. But let me just say that the students participate in the fall semester in an OSHA-10 training at Minnesota State College Southeast. I work with them across the fall semester in a student cohort session, taking a deeper dive into their career exploration interests. And by the way, I should have introduced myself. I am a Community and Economic Development practitioner with a specialty in regional economic competitiveness with a focus on education, training, and workforce development. So I really enjoy bringing the students together from across the county. They are the future workforce for the region. And helping them identify, articulate, give meaning to what their interests might be in either continued education and training or employment. So the components that you can see on the slide are partnerships, partnerships with the Department of Labor and Industry, the school districts, manufacturers, and now agribusiness, Minnesota State College Southeast. And our employer partners put in an enormous effort in paperwork and getting approval from DLI to be safe places, to have put together programs that are considered a meaningful experience. They pay the students $10 an hour. So the way we do this in the fall, they do the OSHA-10 training, preparing them for worksite learning. I do a deeper dive in career exploration. Then we do industry tours. And this year, we did a dozen virtual industry tours. And they were actually more intimate than being overwhelmed in a large manufacturing site. And they were very, very effective. And then in January, late January, the students are given their first worksite placement. It's for February and March. They do it during the school day from 7:30 to 9:30 in the morning. And it's usually three mornings a week. It was essentially about 40 hours in March, February, and March. And then again, a second placement, so they're introduced to very different environments. And maybe one is in Lake City and one is in Red Wing, one is in Cannon Falls, and another might be in Goodyear. And they have the possibility of earning up to $800. And it's almost more important, the relationships they build. It's been transformative. Students are confident. They are, they feel a greater sense of self-empowerment because of the experience. I do want to say that it has been a challenge to recruit students of color. And so I'm bringing that to your attention because I'm prioritizing that this year. And there's tremendous gravity to not being able to recruit students of color into this program because these internships are stepping stones for school, for tuition reimbursement, and for full employment. And so far, we have three students fully employed with our regional employers, Central Research Lab, Gemini, and Rydell. So I think I've, is that about it?
You mean after they've graduated?
After they've graduated.
Employed by those three entities?
Mm-hmm, yeah. It is, it is really fantastic. You know, on average, it costs $4,000 to $6,000 in human resource costs to recruit one person. And so $400 to $800 to end up being introduced to a cohort of 20 and potentially 30 students is high value. And by the way, I should mention that Red Wing Shoe Company has been an incredible supporter. Many of the students need to wear steel-toed boots, have to wear a helmet if they're going to do any kind of welding. And the shoe has given our employers a 50% discount to pay for the students' boots, which are very expensive. And they pay the difference. I mean, it's a wonderful win-win-win, to sound contrite. But so you can see the eight Red Wing companies, but we are, we have Lake City Employer Partners, Zembroda, Goodyear, and Cannon Falls. And I'm always looking to expand those partnerships in manufacturing and now agribusiness. Is that probably, should I wrap it up?
Very well said.
Okay, thank you very much. Because I really want you to hear from our Red Wing High student, Devin Clatt, who has a wonderful story to tell.
Before you leave, there's three people who have questions.
Oh, well, terrific, yeah.
Will, Anna, Anna's in the queue, so we'll start with that.
Good.
So I was just wondering how you determine which students will go to which location? Is that through that deep dive that you were talking about of figuring out what they want to do after high school and that kind of thing?
Yes, well, in most cases, students identify an occupation or profession that they're familiar with, but they actually know very little about. And so we take a deeper dive into the reality of what that occupation or position entails. And so when it comes time for a placement, by then, they may want to recalibrate. I work with each of the students to determine what would be the best location. And there are many qualifying factors, like what is their transportation situation? You know, how can they get to and from there during the school day? You know, things like that. Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
Thank you. I'm very excited about this. I've been excited about this for several years because of the need that not every student may want to go to college.
Mm-hmm.
But we still need people to do, fill positions within the region. As you do, and I like that. Three is a great starting point. I'd like to see that expanded. Hopefully, we can get more positions filled because even walk or drive around, there's many, many people are looking for jobs. Employment, or employers are looking for employment. So I talked to Mr. Wenland a little bit about this too, and I like this idea. I really do. I have my own, I don't want to run a business in Goodyear.
Oh, you do?
So if you want to contact me, we insure farms and stuff like that. I'm very excited.
Thank you.
I have contacts at aid partners in Goodyear too. Just reach out to me and we'll be happy to see what we can do on that end too because anything to help the students out, get a little bit more information on what they want to do in their life, because this is, high school is the first part of their life. The next part is either going to college or the workforce.
Yes.
And what can we do to prepare our students? It's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that invitation. I just want to underscore that all the employer partners that participated in the virtual industry tours, they gave very personal stories of their own career paths, how they ended up where they are. Majority of them were engineers. The majority of our students wanted, they were interested in engineering occupations. And so that was a reality check that was personal, that was local. And the students also gained a very new perspective about the incredible companies that are here in our county and in our city. And they didn't realize that we have world-class global companies here. So it has expanded their horizons and their perspectives enormously. And they are charged up about it and proud. It's really rewarding.
I do insurance, not very boring.
I see.
But younger people, if you get in there young, you can, it's just like any other field. You're looking for the next generation to come in and fill those spots.
Well, if I can share, one of our first-year students from Zembroda-Mazepa was placed in an internship at Gemini Sign Products, and she loved it. And so she did a summer internship there and then applied for a machine specialist, an entry-level position. And within less than a year, she trained and applied for their printer etcher position. She is now proudly in charge of the printer etcher room. And she has been able to buy her mother's house. I mean, it's extraordinary, but, and she's 19. She is beaming with, you know, feeling confident and proud and grateful. So, thanks. Is there another question?
Nikki is in the queue?
Wow. I'm speechless about that last, you know, this is exactly what we needed. You know, because college isn't for everyone. Definitely wasn't for me. I wish I would have had this in place when I was in high school, about 20, I think it's 23 years ago, 23 or 24, I can't remember. But I would have definitely landed probably in the position or closer to the position that I ended up absolutely loving. But with your request of a more diverse, if you can, this is the thing. The paper and explanation's great, but is there like a video or something? Because I can bring this back to Prairie Island and we can try and get recruits from that way. But we're more of an oral, our membership doesn't really look, you know, too much detail in writing and, you know, it's just for those, that's the type of communication that. And then also, my husband is with, is Hispanic, so we're also very involved in the Hispanic community too. So if this is like got Spanish translation, we could definitely be resources for you in those two communities if you would like. So just if you want, you can email me or contact me afterwards and we can go from there and how we can get more diverse recruitment for students.
Well, thank you very much for that invitation, Nikki. I have been wanting to engage the tribal council in Prairie Island in any way possible. The tribal liaison that was here did not know about this program. And so that's when I became aware that we needed to do a different kind of outreach. I can send you a link to a five-minute video in their own voices.
Oh.
We made.
Yeah, wonderful. And, you know, I can get you to that. I can get, I have a secret doorway into that tribal council. That president is my sister. So anytime you need to reach them, just give me a holler and I'll help you out.
Thank you very much.
Superintendent Anderson?
Yeah, just, first of all, thank you, Burke, for all of your work. You know, it's really been a true collaborative effort led by you to make this happen. I just want to remind everyone that the Learn and Earn program is one important component of our Flight Paths programming. And so we have a lot of other unpaid internships throughout the district. And, but Burke is really focused on the Learn and Earn.
And I forgot to mention that I am on the Winger Flight Paths Committee as well as the District Advisory Committee. So, and I work very closely with Mick and appreciate that. Thank you all. I really want you to hear from one of our shining stars. Thanks.
I think that.
He said, pull it up.
Okay. Do I need to flip through them or?
No, she'll scan for you.
Okay.
Just be able to see yourself.
Yeah.
Can you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So my name is Devin Clatt and I had an internship at Rydell Skates last quarter. So this is just like the presentation I did for the class. So here are some of my goals and expectations. I expected a production manufacturing setting because that's what we talked about in the virtual tours. And I just didn't think there would be as much hands-on work as there was. And then some of my goals going in were to learn more about like job options and then just to help me figure out a plan for my future like by learning more about the industry and just more about working in general. Here are some of the things that I witnessed and then some things that I did. There's human resources, there's marketing manager, there's a custom designer, there's a production manager, and there's just general production. I was like, just general jobs around the production plant. And this is all like making roller skates because that's what Rydell makes and ice skates. Some of like the basic things I did was cutting material that's like the leather and the plastic the shoes are made of. There's marking, it's like marking up the cut material. There is assembling the wheels that go on the roller skates. There's printing little labels that help identify the different pieces of the shoes. There's order processing, that's like taking an order from a company or a person and then printing it out so the people in the plant can read it and make the shoes. There is unloading shipping containers. That's when they get just a large shipment of shoes from their foreign partners and then sell them. There's updating spreadsheets. I was like keeping track of information on other companies, like their competitors that they have to keep track of. And there's moving orders throughout the production steps. Each one was like in a bin. You just had to shift it around so the different steps could get done. And here's some of the highlights. I really liked. I really liked tracing and cutting pieces for the custom shoes, because it was just like a really fun, like, craft kind of thing to do. Like, you literally cut apart the boots, it was kind of cool. And then it was updating the competitor information spreadsheet. That was cool, because one of the people that worked there and I just went through other companies' websites and like took notes on them. And then something else I did just throughout the entire internship was trying to make every process I did very efficient, like, because they have to, they're like three or four years, like, backed up with all their orders. So, yeah, it's kind of necessary to do them quickly. Here's some things that are surprising to me. They let you listen to music and other audio stuff just while you work, which I thought was kind of cool, because you can like multitask. And then the machinery age, like, all their equipment was, it looked very old, and that's kind of cool, because they, like, they're just really high-quality machines that get used a lot. And then some of the methods were just kind of surprising, because I've, like, never seen what it's like to make a shoe or like a boot that they use before. Let me see, I don't need to go into the specific ones for that, so I can go to the next slide. And then, being in a professional work setting, there are the soft skills and those things I kind of learned with the, the soft skills course through the tech college, that really helped me. And it's, and using them in my internship was different than the kind of stuff I'd learned in school, because it's just completely different setting. And then something else I noticed was that people I remember the most were those who were friendly and like talked a lot. And then I can like apply that to my own professional relationships when I have a job later. And then my plans before the internship and after, I don't really have any set plans yet, but then the experience can help me make a more informed choice, because I'm like more aware of positions and occupations that I didn't know about before. Then my plans moving forward would be to attend college for some kind of engineering, probably mechanical, maybe aerospace or civil. And then I'd like to have another internship next year, and then I just could use the skills I learned in school and then in my future jobs. And then there's just the thank you slide to Rydell and Berg and Mick. And I, they asked me if I wanted a job there, so I will have a job for the summer at Rydell, which is kind of cool.
Perfect. That's a good announcement for me.
I have a question for you. Was it difficult to manage, like, school and work? And that's an early morning start.
Not really, because I, I usually get up pretty early, and it was like 7:30, so that wasn't really a problem. And since we had the, like, the hour and a half schedule for classes, it worked out pretty well. So I could just go to, go into the internship a little early, and then I have plenty of time to get to school.
This is one of my concerns with the change in schedule. Of course, we have a changed schedule for next year, so we're going back to seven hours. And so when we start at 9:30, no, if you work till 9:30, then you're going to miss maybe almost a whole first hour.
Yeah, or it would count as credit towards.
That first hour. So really, the counselors could work with them, though, to build a schedule that would be helpful, so that you're not always missing that first hour three days a week.
Yeah.
To keep up.
And I think they usually count as a class, so you don't have class the hour that you have your internship.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah, and that's, that's, it's Learn and Earn, so the learning part is actual credit, and then the earning is the job that generates income. But I agree with you that going from the block to a seven-day day, you know, couldn't happen. And so George and Berg will need to work on some of those details.
Yeah. Well, and it's important to have those, you know, we want to make sure that this is a good experience and like, you know, getting behind your, you know, whatever you might be missing, you don't want to do that, so, but, you know, the experience is so valuable, but, and I'm glad that there's credit for that time, so that's great.
The students have been a reflection paper.
Yeah, and we have like a whole class thing with.
Yeah, we have a class with Man Comms, work-based learning.
Sure, sure.
And I didn't have any issues, like, with schoolwork or anything.
Okay.
Like, based off, yeah.
Yeah, good, good. Nikki, you're in the queue, and my person.
So you worked for about an hour at Rydell a day?
It was two hours on Mondays, Mondays, and Fridays.
Okay, and then you would attend the class probably Tuesdays and Thursdays, right?
We just had a, we didn't have class usually, because the stuff was like, it was just assignments, he posted them at the beginning of the week, and we had the extra class periods to work on, like Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay, and you did all that, and for just one semester, the whole year?
It was just one semester.
So you did all those interchanging of different departments and learning all those skills in just that amount of time?
Well, the stuff with Berg was earlier in the year, and then the internship I had only lasted about a month, so like one quarter, maybe?
So you still learned all those skills at Rydell in just a month?
Yeah.
Wow. These are the things that we need to be, because human resources, that takes for a lot of people years to accomplish, and if we can start getting them while they're young and getting those training, that is impressive. Thank you for coming and sharing your story.
Yeah, well, some of them, those were just things I experienced, too, I didn't necessarily learn all of them, but.
But still, you got, you got your foot in the door of the, just, just for the experience, just in those, that's, it's pretty impressive.
Were you able to use the equipment at Rydell, or was that kind of off?
I used most of the stuff, I think. There's some stuff that I, like, wasn't qualified to use. But, yeah, I could still do the internship like fully. They just didn't let me do some stuff.
The Department of Labor and Industry visited, did a walkthrough last year of every one of our employer partners, so this year, to get reapproval, they simply had a virtual meeting, and people, companies sent in pictures of the equipment students would be using. They already visited the sites in person to evaluate. And last year and this year were both impacted by COVID. So first year, the students had two placements, second year, one placement. This one happened just April and May, and that was because it wasn't safe, or it wasn't, it was only for essential workers until, you know, April. So they were still able to have a placement, and it was, yeah, great.
Yeah, I love the hands-on experience, because then you really get a feeling for different options.
And all of those employers have to submit a meaningful training, supervised training program to the DLI to get approval, so emphasis on meaningful. So, and I think you can tell from Devin, it really was. They all come through that way, it's just amazing.
Well, I would imagine that for, you know, part of it is just exposure, exposure to different occupations, and it's also helpful, it maybe helps you to figure out what you might want to do, but it also can help you to figure out, no, this is not for me. So that, and that's half of it, so that's wonderful.
What are you, what are you doing there now?
Pretty much the same thing I was doing, just like the general factory work.
Yeah, that's good. I know Rydell's, I run the law as president there, so I'm very familiar with the operation, and they're neat people to come and work there. And you probably see it, you know, they probably see they're neat people, so I applaud you for accepting a summer position there to learn more about it. And you're right, I mean, this whole pandemic, you think, there's so many things that it affected, you, we can't even begin to think of the things that the last 16 months created, but people were hooped up, guess what they wanted? Rollerblades. Guess what they couldn't get? Rollerblades. So they're backordered, like you said.
Yep.
Exactly. So applaud you. Thank you, Devin.
Yeah.
Any other questions for these folks before we move on? Thank you very much. All right, well, thank you so much for joining us this evening, we really appreciate your time. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Lots to celebrate there. Thank you all.
Have a good night.
All right. This class continues the moment. Superintendent Anderson has the next agenda.
Want to talk about? What's next?
Did that.
That was it? You had that with Mr. Bowles, that was the only one? That's right.
Next on our agenda is the Learning Plan for 21-22. The district has solicited some feedback from parents and community members, stakeholders about our learning plan for this fall and next school year. And we'll continue to engage the community to get more feedback. And I'll turn it over to you for, I've just kind of set it up for you, the learning plan for the next year.
Oh, sure, thank you. So, as required by federal law, we developed a Safe Learning Plan for next year, and we solicited a real rough draft of the Safe Learning Plan, and then we solicited a public comment by sending out an email message to parents in the district, as well as our, the people who signed up for our community updates. So we received over 30 public comments. We redacted personal information from those public comments and posted everything on the website. So if you go to the school district's website now, you can actually see redacted versions of the public comment. The next stage in developing our plans for next year will be outreach to different groups in the community, and, you know, again, to solicit their feedback and make adjustments. And then we'll be bringing back an updated plan for the school board to review later this summer. So again, you know, we're still soliciting feedback, you know, from community people, and then we will bring it back, but I just wanted to include it as kind of an FYI. And, you know, feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions about the plan or our thinking for next year.
I appreciate that. We have a draft of that learning plan in our board packet, so if it's difficult, I'm sure it's easy to find on our website, but it's also in our board packets, so there's two different ways to access this information.
Again, it's a work in progress. This is the first draft, and we'll, we'll be making adjustments and bringing it back to the board.
Wonderful, thank you. Next on our agenda is activities update with Mr. Paul Harmon.
Good evening, everybody. I, I see from the board packet that we have quite a full agenda, so I don't want to take too much of your time here this evening, but I just wanted to provide you with some information that we solicited from some of our student athletes throughout the course of our season. Certainly, over the past 16 months, it's been a very, as we all know, it's been a challenging time for all of us, but it's been a challenging time for our coaches, advisors, and our activity members as well. And Lisa, I don't, I don't necessarily think I'm going to go slide by slide and just read the slides verbatim, but if you could present those, that would be, that would be appreciated. Thank you, Lisa. Certainly, as part of Winger Activities, you know, we follow the, our mission statement here in Red Wing Public Schools, and I'm really trying to help everybody understand that we see ourselves, and our coaches, advisors, our administration sees ourselves as an extension of the school day. The term extracurricular activities has been used for a long time, but we believe that we are co-curricular. I think there's, words are powerful, and I think the choice there of co is, is important. Jennifer Tiff asked me a couple weeks ago, when I jumped on the call, about our participation numbers, and I shared this out in the email with the board the following day, but I just wanted to give you a little snippet here. As you can see, now these, the participation numbers with enrollment, it's a little skewed because the, the participation numbers, you could be counted twice if there's a, an individual that's involved in a, in a fall activity as well as a winter, we count them twice in terms of our participation numbers here. But if you look at the percentage of enrollment, pretty significant number of our students are involved in these activities. As you can see, in 1920 and 2021, we did see a slight dip in that, and certainly the pandemic has, has impacted that. As, as we get back here into the fall, we'd like to see those numbers go back to where they previously were, in that 90 to 100%, if not more, as a percentage of our, of our overall enrollment. Some of those numbers are skewed as well, because we did make the decision to not have certain activities this year. For example, we did not have seventh and eighth grade middle school basketball this year, just because of the crossover of pods, and a number of those kids are involved in association ball. So those numbers are a little bit skewed there as well. You can kind of just go through the, the next few slides, Lisa. These are all the different academic accomplishments our athletes had. You see our swim team there, our soccer team, our boys' swim and dive team, our girls' tennis team, our gymnastics team. We just found out yesterday that our baseball team all received either academic gold or academic silver. There's volleyball as well, anywhere from a 3.75 to a 4.0. The silvers were 3.5 to a 3.75. So as you can see, with Mr. Klat here just a few minutes ago, he was also a student athlete for us, and for himself, and for our track team here this past spring. Students are involved, and they're, they're making differences in the lives of others, for, for their own lives as well. With the help of some surrounding schools, namely a colleague of mine out of Hastings, we introduced some student surveys at the end of our fall, winter, and spring seasons, looking at those four core areas of competence, confidence, connection, and character, certainly competence and confidence, not only in that given skill, but how they are using some of those soft skills that we saw in the Learn and Earn program. But I'd like to think that a lot of our activities are teaching some of those soft skills that individuals are going to need for the rest of their life. I think the number one thing we offer of those seasons, we offer connection. We offer a connection from our students back into our building when our school day is over. We offer connection to trusted adults, we offer connections from student to student in developing those lifelong, meaningful relationships. And so athletes in our, in our junior varsity and our varsity programs were surveyed at the conclusion of their seasons. It was a 15-question or 15-statements that they had the opportunity to agree, disagree, strongly agree, et cetera. Depending on the student, it took about 10 minutes. The next slide, I think, shows those 15 statements, again, going back to those four areas that we are trying to, to look at from an activities department. I don't feel the need necessarily to read each one of those statements. Certainly, I'm going to pause any time you jump in the queue and answer a question or two, and then obviously we'll answer some questions at the end. But what we're looking at here is a holistic approach to activities and athletics, from the actual game itself, to those connections, to enjoyment, to the skills that are being taught and learned in those, in those given sports and activities. And then those, that relationship piece is really what we want to try to focus on. I have not been on the, in a meeting in a while. I see Holly jumped into the queue. Do you want me to manage the queue, or?
Go ahead, Paul.
Okay. If I miss something, let me know. Go ahead, Holly.
Um, I, I looked through this earlier, I, I can't remember, did you put the response rate, like, how many kids responded to this survey?
I did not put that in here, no. I can tell you that as a percentage, the numbers were much higher in the fall and winter as compared to the spring, because we got, the spring went out kind of late, and there was a lot of stuff going on there in June. But it was a very high response rate. I, I have it at my desk, I don't, I just don't have that off the top of my head right now.
Is it like ballpark, like 70, 80%?
Yes.
Okay.
At least, at least, yeah, very high response rate.
That's fine.
Yeah. Nikki?
As a sports mother that's not really into sports herself, I would have to say that, because we do association and school, school sports make my life so much easier. And you're right about the connections. That was an addition, there were additional adults, additional children for my kids to interact with and help my child with like, real-life situations, you know? That's all, that's what community's all about. And I would just have to say, I, give your, give your whole department a pat on the back, you guys really did an amazing job with pulling this off for this school year, because I understand it was tough, you know? But yeah, I would have to say that as a sports parent, that I prefer school sports versus the association sport. So thank you very much.
Yep. I think Carson jumped in there.
Yeah, Paul, just clarification, do these numbers include like the Nordic ski program and ultimate frisbee?
That's a very good question. Since those two programs are not run out of our office, they're run through community ed, I, I just went with the registered participants that run through our. ed, I just went with the registered participants that run through our office, but that's certainly something that we can look to expand into next year.
Yeah, again, I was just curious, and just, you know, because our numbers are even higher in terms of participation if we include the kids in our school activities.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. In addition to that, too, I'm glad you brought that up, is that, you know, we have a number of kids that are in association activities that aren't necessarily in school based on their age, so they're in association in seventh and eighth. So those numbers are even higher than what we saw there. So yes, yeah, they did not register through us, so yeah, those numbers are even higher. So thank you for pointing that out, Carson. You know, as you look through, I'm not going to go through and just read the percentages verbatim, but I think there's certainly some areas of strong accomplishment, and I think there's certainly some areas that we are going to continue to look at. You know, and I chose not to show individual sports. One could argue that I shouldn't have even divided up the seasons, but you certainly saw some trends throughout our time here this year. I think that you look at my coach caring about me, I really tried to focus in on that, and we went through a lot of these statements and survey results with our coaches at their end-of-the-season meetings. And so I think, you know, as you look at our seasons this year, for our state high school league-sponsored activities, we didn't have any section championships as teams. We didn't have state tournament participations for our teams, but our students still had very strong experiences and very meaningful experiences that we hope that they can take with them into this summer and the next year, and for our graduating seniors throughout the rest of their lives. I think Pam jumped in.
Yeah, I just had a question about activities. I know this is focused on sports, but is there a way to get feedback from the other activities that our students are involved with in the district?
There certainly is, and like I said, this is kind of a trial run by me. I wanted to see how it went initially with our athletic teams, just because they meet every day throughout the course of a two- to three- or four-month season. But certainly, based on the feedback that we've been given, we're going to look to expand this in coming years. I think the wording of some of the statements may need to be adjusted for that, but yes, the answer to that question is yes. Anna, I think?
Yeah. So, thank you so much for putting this together. Just kind of popping down to your last slide, your considerations of increasing participation and, you know, educating students and families. And one thing that I think about all the time with just the location of the high school is those barriers to participation for students who don't have their own transportation, or, you know, who have parents who are working in the evenings and things like that. And I don't know, I'm not suggesting that you come up with an answer right now, I just think that that's something that we maybe overlook a lot of times, is that, you know, that can be a real issue to keep kids from being able to participate in things that happen after school. And with semi-reliable public transportation, but, you know, I don't think that the ride like regularly makes rounds, you know, like it just, it's far enough away that it's a, you know, there's a pretty significant hill between here and my house that, you know, like my kid's not going to ride her bike, you know, to school or after. You know, so I think that's just something that we, not just for, you know, sports, but for any of the activities that happen after school or before school, to think of how can we eliminate some of those barriers to participation with the understanding that everybody has a two-parent household with, you know, flexible scheduling and the ability to chauffeur kids around and that kind of thing.
I agree with that a hundred percent, a hundred percent. And that's something that we are continuing to look at, some of those transportation issues that come up, that arise with that.
But I think you do have in place some things for families who can't pay like the activity fees or like the supplies and stuff like that. I think that you already, some of that in place, though, right?
Yep, absolutely, yep. If you could maybe scroll a little bit more, Lisa. Like I said, I'm not going to read every percentage of every question to you, but a few questions kind of jumped to the end there. Not only this year, but in past years, it has been shown that student involvement in activities, on average, you're looking, depending on if it's a weighted GPA or not, students that are involved have about a point eight to a one point two higher GPA than those not involved. And so that's one of the things, you know, in the midst of this pandemic and prior to it, and post, post may be the wrong word, but that's one thing that Mr. Nemeth and I are really trying to focus on, is how do we get more kids connected back into our building with student activities? And that's going to be one of our goals moving forward here, is how do we get more kids involved? Holly?
Thank you, Paul. Anna, you bring up such a great point, and I know that some of the bigger districts can have, sorry, my braces, some of the bigger districts can have an activity bus, you know, that can stick around or come back and get kids at the five o'clock time or the five-thirty time, and I know it's expensive. But the point that I see you making tonight, Paul, is that this is an extension of their school day. The activity program and the sports program and those things are extensions of how we go about educating our students and how we go about, you know, preparing them for all kinds of things in life, not just the classroom. So as the team, whoever you're working with thinks about that, if, you know, if there was an idea of an activity bus, it wouldn't necessarily have to drop kids off at their homes, but it could drop kids off at central locations that would be closer for them to walk to Burnside, or, you know, if it was an AP drop-off, or if it was, you know, just different places. I would be interested in hearing something like that, because Anna's right on the money. We're not going to get kids to play if they can't get there or participate. And so I know, like I said, the bigger districts do activity buses for the kids to go home at night, and it helps. So thank you, Paul. Thanks, Anna.
Any other questions for Mr. Hartman? All right, well, I'm not seeing any more, so thank you for joining us this evening. It's been great to see all this information and know that we have a vibrant activity group going on, and we're supporting kids of a number of ways on a number of different avenues that where they can express themselves, learn some skills, great opportunity for teamwork. And I think especially in the pandemic, too, kids really needed to feel connected to one another, and this was yet another way that we were able to provide that. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda, school board reports. I'm just going to go down the list here. Any updates from finance committee?
The only update I have is that we don't have an update yet on the budget from the legislature, so we're still waiting. And hopefully by next Monday, when we have our finance meeting, we'll have an answer about something, yes, Jim? And then when we meet Monday night, we can have something. They've talked about if the state doesn't come up with a budget, what that looks like for local governments, schools, it doesn't look good. So I'm hoping people can get together and make some decisions up there, so we can make our decisions down here.
Yes, thank you.
Nikki and Jim, anything else you want to add about finance?
It's just the way we expected. They wouldn't get their work done, and we wouldn't probably be able to have all the answers by next Monday, so.
Yeah, I know.
Is this something where we could, as a board, write a letter to the legislature, you know, with all of us to say, like, look, we need you to do your job so that we can do ours? You know what I mean? Like?
Compromise, get along, do the right thing?
You could. Really, it should be come from a more bigger network, like the School Board Association, representative of each school, each school listed and all that. We have Goggan and Haley. There are two people, one's in the majority and one's in the minority. So it's the minority in the House seems to be holding up the show. It sounds like Kurt Dowd has pledged to be heard of this and that. So unfortunately, one letter's great, a bigger letter is even better. And you're on the right idea, but to get that now, because there's so many pieces of their budget that they're doing. We're just going to pass the budget next Monday, no matter what it is, but whatever best guess is, so.
I don't think it could ever hurt. I mean, give our folks a call, give them a message, too, that they always like to hear from us, and they've been really good, strong advocates for our district. So it never hurts to send letters, make calls, send emails. Definitely have to lobby. All right, thanks, Holly. Operations, anything updates from operations?
No, as of right now, there's no meeting scheduled for July unless we have some further information on something that Alan's looking at doing. So nothing, we reported the last meeting.
Yeah. Same thing with personnel, there's nothing new to report. We were reported out at the last meeting. Anything from legislative and policy? Harlan?
Yeah, we met tonight, and as usual, we had more than we could get done in our time. We reviewed a data sharing agreement that was proposed to be used with the organization here and gave a little input. We reviewed policies, 403, I believe we did all these, 403, 506, 514, 522, 524, and 1000. Trying to remember what each one of them is, but some has to do with human sexual harassment, various things like that. We also talked a little bit about school board procedures. I think Carson will be addressing that later this meeting. We didn't really reach consensus on everything. I think there's, most of what we did is going to be coming back to us next month. We'll be meeting on the nineteenth of July, but also some of these policies will be brought to the board, I believe, on the nineteenth of July, so. It was a very productive meeting. Now you guys can help me out, because I did a very poor job of remembering all the numbers and what they are.
The majority of the policies that we reviewed didn't have any changes made to them. There are just a couple that have a few changes, but yeah, those will be at the second meeting in July for approval.
Anything else? We have nothing else to report on negotiations. We'll be talking more about that next Monday at our special meeting. Any other meetings that anyone would like to report on?
I don't have. Yeah, so when we had our equity workshop, one of the things that we talked about was getting feedback from our community about, you know, how they're feeling about the district, and especially in relation to equity. And so Jennifer and I met with Michelle Lysy, who, with her role with Live Healthy Red Wing, started kind of that process of what became the 2040 Plan, and now her role as the, I don't know her exact title, community engagement specialist, something like that, with the city of Red Wing. So she had already done, you know, for the last, what, four or five years, has done a lot of that engagement work. So we just, you know, got feedback from her about what worked and maybe what didn't, and how she would recommend us kind of going forward with that. And she, you know, felt really strongly that physically being out in person at different places where people are, like at the pool, outside of daycares, at the Alps when, you know, families are coming to get their school supplies, concerts in the park, Knights to unite, those types of things, to just have a presence and, you know, listen to what the community has to say, and have some questions to kind of structure their feedback. She suggested things like, what do you love about? In her case, it was what do you love about Red Wing and what would you change about Red Wing? And just kind of left it really broad. And then to maybe have some specific thing, like talked a lot about, and so Jennifer and I brought up with her the complaint process that we've all talked about of, you know, having, who does that go to? And how does that process work if you are a student or a teacher who feels like there is an issue that's occurring? So, you know, one of Michelle's thoughts was to just kind of open that up, to say, if you had a problem at school, how would you want that to be addressed? And to kind of get that feedback from the community. So it's just, you know, we're just kind of starting this kind of process, but looking at, you know, having some opportunities for the community to give feedback in a personal verbal way, not just written surveys or, you know, things that go out that are easily deleted or sent to the junk email, or, you know, that kind of thing. And working with the organizations who have a trusted relationship with different communities. You know, we've kind of talked about this, and Nikki has brought it up, that, you know, members of Prairie Island community may not feel comfortable talking to me, but they might feel comfortable talking to Nikki. And, you know, the other community groups that we have, where Hope Coalition already has a trusted relationship with families, to kind of utilize that to partner with them, for them to help us get feedback from different groups that might not always feel comfortable, you know, kind of talking to authority, or not comfortable within the school system, or just kind of not know how to navigate, how to come speak at a meeting, how to send emails, you know, that type of thing. So anything else that I missed?
That was great. It was a very worthwhile meeting. I think it just was determining where do we go with it, you know, from here? What can we do next? How can we use what we learned from Michelle moving forward? Is there something we can do this summer? Next up.
Would it be prudent to put that on our agenda for next Monday, to just have a deeper discussion about that? Or maybe into July? Or do you want to take that back to your equity team?
Yes, that's kind of what I was thinking, but I don't know when the equity team is meeting again next. So maybe if we put it on like the July agenda, we can kind of do a little light work in between, and I can talk to Jess at the equity committee and kind of see what the plan is there.
Okay. So an update back in July?
Yeah.
Okay.
At the workshop?
Sounds like a meeting?
I think a meeting, yeah. What do we, we don't have the first one, just the second one, if I'm correct? Including my calendar.
Yeah, we don't have one.
Just the nineteenth?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I guess if there's room in the agenda, I think that would probably be good, so that we can hopefully maybe still do some things throughout the summer.
And then if you could give me, you know, the rough draft of information, the ones that before.
Yeah.
Preferably earlier than that, but the very latest.
Yes, yes.
Do you have that on the agenda? Your sheet, you're not going to write that down?
Got it.
Got it. All right, good. Thank you. Any other committees or meetings that anyone would like to report?
The Native American Parent Committee. I was actually pretty sick during that, and I didn't take any notes, but I do remember a lot of the, because it was a pretty big meeting of, you know, what are we to do with the rest of the funds, you know, we don't want them to go back to the state. And so, well, I think what they had decided was, is it's going to go a lot, some are going to go to the books that are going to fund the native literature class. And then also what they want to do, what we decided to do is that we want to be able to provide some money for training for some teachers and for our staff and stuff like that. So just kind of keep that on your radar for when training comes about, I think, this fall. So it will be offered, I know. So that's what they had decided to do with the rest of the funding for this year, so.
Great. Thank you. Anything else, any other updates? All right, then, I will turn it over to the superintendent for his report.
Well, I was on vacation the day after our last board meeting, so I really don't have much information to share. I did include some potential workshop topics, and in June, it was not a workshop, it's a special meeting, but we're planning to approve, well, we need to approve the initial budget for the next school year, so that'll be on the agenda. And then we've been planning a labor negotiation strategy session, which would be a closed session. But of course, as we were talking about earlier, we have financial information from the state, but I think we should continue with that closed session, just to talk about some of the big topics that we have and, you know, look at. and, you know, look at some different possibilities. So I'm really disappointed that we don't have the financial numbers from the state. That's going to slow us down, I think. But that's what's happening in June. You can see the list of everything else. During the committee meeting today, we did talk about using a workshop session to talk about student discipline, especially with an equity lens, as well as curriculum, you know, in terms of policy among thousands, again, with an equity lens. And so I'll be adding those two topics to potential workshop opportunities. That's all I have.
All right, the consent agenda is next. Does anybody have anything they would like to quote from the consent agenda this evening? Seeing nothing. Then I will look for a motion to approve as presented. So we'll, motion made by Anna, do I have a second? A second. Jennifer, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote to approve the consent agenda as presented, starting with Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrickx?
Aye.
Ms. Astendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tipp?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Consent agenda passes seven zero. Donations and grants.
I'd like to recognize three groups for their donations. First of all, Sergeant's Nursery, $500 for the twin block playground, Noble Storage Electric for just under $32,000 for home dorm tool kits for our graduating seniors. Mick showed me one of the kits and it's very impressive. So at the time, he was trying to figure out ways to work with students as they're graduating on how to use the items in the kit. I'm not sure how far he got with that, but what a great donation. You know, again, it's hands-on, it's impactful, and so we want to thank them for that generous donation. By the way, it's one piece of a larger donation. So I think it's a six-figure year plan that they've put out so far. So that's amazing. And then also, I say this so often, but once again, thank you to the Red Wing Public Schools Foundation for just under $3,000 for a hub to all microphones.
Motion to approve is coming.
All right, Jim has made the motion to approve donations and grants. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, a second. Any other? Feedback?
Comment?
Comments?
I do?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, you're right about Cannabaskarp, I believe I saw where for the area schools in the county, there's up to a $500,000 grant that they're providing to schools for different reasons, different ways. They're a worldwide corporation, as Burke had talked about before. Big operation just outside of Little Town in Goodview. And don't forget, let's not forget about Sergeant's Nursery, the 500 is an enormous donation too for a playground and school foundations to help us with the microphones that we just approved and needed for that of the hall. So three, our community steps up a lot of times and donate things to us. And there's three are within the, two within the school district and one outside that's doing everything to begin to help our students.
I can do it without them. All right, motion on the table made by Jim, seconded by Anna. Any other discussion? Take a roll call vote, this time starting with Ms. Buck.
Aye.
Mr. Derrickx?
Aye.
Ms. Astendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tipp?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That passes seven zero. All right, proposal to close Jefferson School.
The board packet includes information about the context for making the recommendation to close Jefferson School, publication notices in the Republican bill that are required by state law, information about the public hearing that was held at the last school board meeting. No one was present to share their public comment about closing Jefferson School. And we also have the reasons for the proposed closing also listed in the board packet. I'm certainly willing to take questions if there are any, but the recommendation is to move to close Jefferson School prior to the beginning of the 21, 22 school year.
Any discussion?
I will just say that, you know, it is a beautiful school. I got to sub there this year and that was really cool. So, you know, it's sad to see it go back into being closed, but I think it is the best decision for all the reasons that are in the packet. But, you know, it worked out really well to have it this year. And that, you know, people got to have a really cool experience with Jefferson. So that's all I had to say.
Well said.
And I will make a motion to close Jefferson School prior to the beginning of the 2021, 22 school year.
I have a second.
Nikki Buck seconds as I silently cry, but yes.
I know, I know. Any other discussion?
If I just may, if I'm on the queue. I went there sixth grade, so the building was up to be long before I was there. But it's a beautiful building. We sold it twice, got it back twice. So let's hope we can at some point benefit the community by having something, something that's meaningful that they can use, so.
All right, I have a motion on the table made by Anna, seconded by Nikki. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote, this time starting with Mr. Derrickx.
Aye.
Ms. Astendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tipp?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Passes seven zero. All right, Red Wing Public School Storage Area Network Recommendation.
Yeah, as part of our operating capital plan, we did include a replacement of our storage area network, or SAN, for our computer systems. And so Kevin Johnson led the effort to solicit quotes. We received three. They are listed in the board packet. And the recommendation is to approve the quote submitted by Now Micro, the amount of $111,345.74 to replace the district-wide storage area network.
To approve.
Hmm, so moved.
Jim made the, would you like to second it, Holly?
Um, is that what he just said?
He did, yes.
I heard him say something. I'm going to second it, Jim.
Molly, I'll second it. Any discussion? Mr. Derrickx?
Sorry, I'm not passing up on that mute button. Did we get any references on these three different organizations for storage? There's quite a $50,000 discrepancy from low to high. Are they all reputable? Have we checked them? What do we know about each one of them?
Yes, we have checked each one of them. The Cyber Advisors one actually is a Dell product. Now Micro is probably the largest vendor of Tintri brands. So Tintri is actually the manufacturer we went with. And the reason Now Micro is the lowest is they have the state contract on this device. So that's why they came in low. And we actually have a Tintri now and it is a good piece of equipment, a good company, yes. Thank you. Good question.
Any other discussion?
I just really wanted to say I appreciate you coming in under the allotted amount. So whoever those people are that sent you that amount that they're willing to go for, yay.
Some background information on it helped too, so.
Good. All right, motion on the table made by Jim, seconded by Holly to go as Now Micro and the amount of $111,345.74 to replace the district-wide storage area network. We'll take a roll call vote, this time starting with Ms. Astendorf.
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tipp?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrickx?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Passes seven zero.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good luck for holding with us this evening. Appreciate your work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, next is school board procedures.
Yeah, my recommendation is changing from approving the handbook to tabling the handbook until July 19th, but I won't explain why. Last Tuesday, had a brief discussion about ADA and Section 504 coordinator responsibilities. And so thinking about that further, I think we need a little time to really double check whether Amy French is the right person to do that, or perhaps Sherri Johnson, who's our special education director. By far, most of the complaints that would come through about those two areas would go through Sherri Johnson. So the request is to table it for that reason, just so that we can take a look at that. And then we take it through the legislative policy committee on the 19th and the board, you know, that same evening. So another question that came up as a result of the committee discussion just a couple of hours ago had to do with including the school board member pay plan in that handbook. And so committee members would prefer it as a separate document, which is, it's fine with me either way. I just don't think we should wait on it or, you know, belabor discussion about, you know, meeting after meeting. But the committee's recommendation is to have that as a separate item and then we approve both of them, hopefully on July 19th.
So you need a motion to table, but I'll make a motion to table the school board procedure handbook until July 19th, school board meeting.
I'll second.
All right, motion to table until July 19th, made by Jim, seconded by Holly. Any other discussion?
No discussion on the table.
Okay, good, good to know. No discussion on the table yet. All right, we'll start a roll call with Ms. Tower.
Yes.
Ms. Tipp?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrickx?
Aye.
Ms. Astendorf?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. That I have this table until July 19th. Okay, Early Childhood Director.
For the past several years, we've been planning for the resignation or retirement of Midmark notes, our current Early Childhood Director. This year, we're making that transition. And instead of hiring the position through the Goodview County Ed District, I'm planning to post it and hire it as a Red Wing school employee. But because we did that, we developed, or because that's the plan, we developed a position description, sent it through the Oakland Compensation to rate it or abandon it. And after reviewing those results, we are recommending that this particular position be classified in Group A of the Terms and Conditions of Employment for Program Directors and Supervisors. It matches the same category as the category for Paul Hartman, our Activities Director. And so just be in line with that particular position. So that's the recommendation that's presented.
Let's see, Mr. Derrickx? Harlan, your name's in the queue?
Thank you. Can you give us any information how this figures out cost-wise to previous years on what we're doing?
I know Jackie had developed that information. Of course, it all depends on who we hire and where we place that person on the salary schedule. But the assumption is that it's somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000, but it could be less than that, it could be more than that, depending on who we hire.
10 to 15, less than we've spent in other years or more than other years?
It'd be more. Yeah. And in our budget reconciliation plan, we included that anticipated increase. So we, we've already addressed that in terms of our planning for next year.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. I'd just rather see the numbers on paper trying to understand this.
Sure.
Mr. Bryant?
Thank you, Chair. Alongside with Mr. Derrickx, the costs, is there some more funding that we get back for this? Because it's tied to GCE and I'd rather see numbers in front of me too. Fiscal $10,000, $15,000 might be, might be higher.
Yeah, and today's year, the bulk of the funding for the position comes from community education and state special education funding. It could be a portion of federal special education funding as well. But the bulk is community ed and state special ed.
I see Jack in queue.
Hi, I'm on the call. I thought I would step in. The cost to the general fund would be, it currently costs the general fund $9,800 for this position and the new costing, again, depending on where they're hired on the scale, could be around $17,000. So we're looking at an $8,000 cost to the general fund. The bulk of the increase would come from the community ed fund, where this position is currently costing around $56,000 and it would move up to $78,000 out of the community ed fund. There is state funding for this position for the piece of it that is special ed, but this position oversees both the special ed department at Colville and the early childhood programming at Colville and preschool programming.
And just so you're aware, birth to five, special education from birth on is mandated services. So it's not an optional service that we provide for our children with special needs. And we will be doing a time study to determine, you know, the position has evolved in the last few years. So we will be studying to see how much is special ed, how much is community ed. You know, this is birth to age five, comprehensive programming. So really, where the contract is held is really what's going to be changing. It's moving from the ed district to the school district.
And did we talk about who is the best supervisor for this position?
It would primarily responsibility be Ashley, but then also Marsha Walker, a important role as a father. She's in the special education.
I know, I see you in the queue here.
It's under community education.
Okay. So this past year, I know it was split between Min still being the director and then Brittany being the kind of site manager. How is that going to, what's the plan for that going into the next year? Does this position replace both or just the portion? How is that?
It replaces both.
So when we're looking at the funding or the cost part of this, Jackie, is that figured in that this is?
Well, last year, community ed paid the coordinator, so I paid Brittany. I mean, we pay Brittany. So really, it's always been a combination of special ed and community ed for as long as the, you know, the program has been around 30, 40 years. So it is a breakdown of both. And Red Wing, we have a comprehensive learning center that serves all children, which is your best model. So we prorate that financially between the different funding sources.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll make the motion to change the terms and conditions of employment for program directors and supervisors to include the Early Childhood Director in Group A as presented.
I'm going to second it.
Jennifer made the motion, Holly seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Tipp.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrickx?
No.
Ms. Astendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Alright, motion passes, oh, chair votes aye and motion passes six one. Um, alright, public summary of the superintendent. Uh, in June here, we engaged in some feedback from our board, um, goals that the board had made for our superintendent this past November, December. We, uh, were each given an opportunity to weigh in on that, on these goals, on how we feel the superintendent is, um, managing and meeting those expectations and goals. We met in a closed session at our last board meeting on June 7th and, um, had a conversation with the superintendent. We focused on four goals, equity planning and how the district is doing with that. Um, recognizing that the superintendent, um, isn't responsible for all of the district's, um, work, but he's certainly the leader and sets the tone. Um, we talked about student achievement, recovery from COVID and human resources. Uh, and so our directives, um, we would like to have, um, continued work on that equity planning. Um, and of course, we need more, uh, work with student achievement. We'd like to see that gap, um, uh, lesson, and I know that there's, uh, education plan to develop that, uh, hit those goals. Uh, we talked about recovery from COVID, it's been a difficult year. Um, we've appreciated the, um, management of the district through that pandemic and, um, there was a concern about, um, the shortened quarantine and the conversations surrounding that in terms of, um, special meeting, so we discussed that. Um, and then we have directed ongoing work with our human resources, um, planning and hiring practices. It's a strong area of concern for the board. Um, there is an independent consulting firm that's been hired to review our practices and make recommendations for future improvement. Uh, and the rest, I will let you read on your own. Uh, we don't need to continue going through that, but, um, it is a process that we believe, uh, evaluations are an important piece of the work that we do here in our district, including that of the superintendent. Uh, we will be engaging in a full, um, evaluation come November, December. That's when, um, we rate, uh, the superintendent and then come out with some action plans. Um, so this is kind of just to dip our toe in the water, try to figure out, um, where we're at, um, and where we need to move for the next few months, so that when we get to November and the deeper dive, um, we're prepared to have that discussion. There's no action, actionable items on this this evening. Any comments? Alright, seeing none of that, oh, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, if you don't mind, uh, once again, thank you for the session, uh, two weeks ago. Uh, I think it's important to have dialogue, uh, with multiple perspectives. I think that makes us better and I, I really appreciate the conversation and the feedback.
Thank you. Alright, last item on our agenda this evening, upcoming meetings and future topics. Uh, our next board meeting, uh, we're going to have a special meeting next Monday. Uh, that would be June 28th, right here in J110. It's a special meeting, we'll have, be having a closed session for part of that. Um, and then we only have one board meeting in July, that's on the 19th. And then we're chipped on the 26th. All other committee meetings are listed there in our board packet, so I'll call your attention to that for references.
Do we have a topic for that workshop in July?
We have not designated a topic quite yet, so if you do have some feedback, uh, it's, uh, or suggestions, suggestions, that's a, a really good time to, to have a deeper dive on something on that night. So we'll discuss that at our next agenda committee meeting. So if you have some ideas or thoughts, definitely bring those forward. There is a list in our packet that the superintendent keeps, um, and so we'll, uh, take a look at that.
I was just curious, and we'll, we'll talk on, uh, 13th, I think, the agenda committee meets, but if Anna brought that, between you and Jennifer, uh, with Michelle, if our agenda gets too lengthy on the 19th, my suggestion would be to move that topic to the workshop on the 26th and to the regular board meeting early in August.
Mm-hmm.
But we'll have to see with the agenda, because that could be quite, quite a dialogue that we have,
Mm-hmm.
based upon the information that you uncovered.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there as a possibility.
Well, and it wouldn't be bad to circle back around on that, the equity planning that we had, um, from earlier in our year, um, with the work, workshop that we had, because we did have some action plans, um, at that workshop, and so it'd be a good time to see where we're at with all that and what our next step should be, so. And it's not a bad idea.
And we may just be able to give it time that, that it needs to, by doing that. I'm just throwing it out there as a possibility.
Sure.
Nothing been decided.
Any other future topics or upcoming meetings to discuss? Seeing none, then I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Who has a second?
I'll second.
Hannah's seconding, motion to adjourn, we have to take a roll call vote for that, starting with, well, my, uh, to Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tipp?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're adjourned at 7:36. And just so you all know, when we start meeting all in person, we don't have to take all this roll call.
Say sometime later.
And is that in August again?